Is it in the back?
Hello?
Yes.
And welcome to the February 5th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency. Now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first application tonight is River View re-subdivision. This is a returning application. We first saw this back in April 2017. Mr. Andros, come on up. We had some communication back and forth. I believe I outlined what next steps for Mr. Andros should undertake to move this project forward, and he met everyone. We have received letters from the Fire Department for Emergency Services indicating that they can make it around the corner. He's found an area for a buildable lot, a three-bedroom house, along with garage and shed. So it appears that most of our concerns were allayed. Mr. Andros, we turn it over to you.
Well, I think, well, first of all, thanks everybody for showing up tonight.
We usually do.
Well, no, I mean, I don't know how much of an agenda you have, but I appreciate it. It's been quite a haul.
You are the agenda.
It's been quite a haul. And I think that I've answered most, well, not most, of all the questions and all the items, but maybe, just maybe, you can accept us for sketch plan and type the action under Seeker and circulate.
We have a resolution prepared to circulate. I don't believe that it accepts for sketch yet because we wanted to hear some comments from our consultants, but I think they're going to be minor in nature. Correct? Is this a good time to go to Ms. Axelson?
There's one consultant sitting there.
She has two microphones, though.
I have two, but I'm only going to use one. I don't want to be...
She's representing three people.
Self-flagrantizing. So the general layout looks fine. There's some more information to put on the map, not a lot. And I have some comments, I will have some comments on the zoning table, but I've looked enough at the landings, zoning district standards, purposes, requirements, to know that the layout works and it's compliant in terms of zoning, as far as I can tell. And then, so I will have detailed comments if the board will forgive me. I've had some personal matters to deal with and didn't get the memo done. I know that we need to put the stream corridor on there even though it doesn't affect what can be on the lots. It's just a matter of showing it as a feature. And then I looked through the EAF, which is generally fine. It's a full EAF or kind of a minor project. But what I do, first of all, is make a full EAF mapper blank. I don't know, the board is aware of the online platform. So I grabbed that and all the information, and I can forward the mapper blank over to you because it's the new form and it has all the information in it, and it has two pages at the end that summarize whatever features are attributed to the lot. And again, most of these don't change the layout or the design or the use of the lot. So I'll do those comments, but the main one I wanted to note is that archaeological sensitivity is noted. I know the board and you are aware that there are historic places nearby, but in the full EAF mapper blanket notes archaeological sensitivity and, again, realizing there's no disturbance proposed, like no excavation that we know of. So the thing to do is to, as soon as you can, start an online consultation. It's called the Cultural Resource Information System. It's through New York State Office of Park Recreation Historic Preservation's website, so Cultural Resource Information System, or CRIS, and it's an online way that you can submit a description of the project, attachments, and other things for consultation, and give them any description narrative that talks about what the project is and your plans, et cetera. There are places where you can upload maps. And then, one recommendation with your first consultation, typically they'll come back and say, provide photographs of buildings on the site and the site, and so you might want to go out and get some photographs right away so that when you can, when you're doing the online submittal, you'll have that ready. So that's the only thing that I think, you know, that would be the most urgent thing. And then I'm going to get this out on Friday, my review, and it'll basically be brushing up the EAF and the map. It otherwise looks pretty good. So I would, I don't have any issue with the layout. And I did go ahead and review for both sketch and the requirements for minor, so I went as far as I could.
Great.
Get it done, so.
Any questions?
Yeah. With regard to the CRIS, I did that once.
You did?
It's in the file.
Oh.
I got a, no, no impact.
Oh, that's, that's handy.
I don't know whether that suffices.
Is that whatever information you have, if you could email it to Cynthia and then...
The date is April 3rd, 2017. It's in my file. It will be in the permanent file as well.
Oh, I didn't have that.
That's impressive.
Well, that's good news.
That's okay. That's why I bring these.
You bring all the back materials.
What, 2015?
Well, this is from 2017, when the project was first, before he actually brought it to us. He went ahead and went through the CRIS system, and so it's, we have a no-impact letter from then, and that was before, a while back. At any rate...
Okay.
I don't think that there's much archaeologically or culturally that's going on down there since then. I hope that that will suffice.
Is this the same project?
Excuse me?
Has anything changed since that?
No.
The only thing that's changed is it shows now a house, where a house could be located, put that way. But with no, again, so this is not a realty subdivision in the Department of Health.
Not from the health department's standpoint.
So we had asked Mr. Andros to go through and show us that something, once the lot is created, there could be something that could be put on it so that there would be a way to meet some sort of investment expectations. And he worked, that's why he's been gone for a while, he worked with Department of Health to locate a septic for a three, I was kind of surprised for a three-bedroom house, which I've also been thinking, that three-bedroom house would have beautiful views of the river. It had lots of windows along one side, so, but he's not proposing this. So when we get to an approval, we would ask, I think, condition, one condition would be adding a note stating that site plan review would be required for this when it comes back because it's in a SaaS, so it requires site plan. And we're not going to go through site plan for Seeker or anything. This is just Seeker on the subdivision.
So my question is, when the submittal was made to obtain that sign-off letter, was it the same plan that we're looking at now with the house?
Not, no.
No.
The house wouldn't have been shown, just the boundaries, subdivision, lines.
I'm wondering if it would be, make sense to do an online submittal, including that letter and the plans, with whatever, the letter would have the old project number.
Yeah.
And just to get them, I don't know, it's up to the board.
Wouldn't that be done if we, if Mr. Andros comes back for site plan to pull a building permit, wouldn't that be done as part of Seeker on the site plan as opposed to...
It could be. I guess I would be concerned about looking at this as the whole action. In other words, what's presented now is a subdivision showing a possible residential lot. My attitude is, look at the whole action, do Seeker on this, and then when, I would think, when it comes back for site plan with a similar configuration, that that would just be an affirmation of the neg-deck that you do this time. That would be my recommendation.
Board, please weigh in when you make comments about whether you think this should go back to CRIS with the house location shown. It may make a difference, although I don't personally think so because I live near the site and buy it all the time. The historic resources are the train station and then the Vanderbilt Estate, per se, located across Dock Street from some of this housing.
Liz, your reasoning for wanting it to be resubmitted, on one hand, I can understand, but also to pick up on Michael's point, if the property stays where it is, and he's not suggesting moving it, and whatever building that's going to be on it, it's going to be more or less the same, what are the differences?
I'm sorry, I'm going on the understanding that when the 2017 letter was obtained, was anything shown on the second lot? That's the only difference. Unless it was just represented as a residential lot and that doesn't matter. Was it previously proposed as a residential...
It didn't have any use proposed on it. It was just a subdivision of land.
Oh. Well, if the board is satisfied...
Well, I like to proceed out of an abundance of caution, generally speaking. And in our resolution, we're prepared to refer it over to SHIPO again, based on this being a slightly revised plan because there's a house shown on it.
Right, I thought that's one thing that had been discussed.
Pete, do you mind reapplying to CRIS to go through and see if there's a change?
Well, the only reason why the house is shown is because you folks wanted it shown.
Because, correct, because we have, we can't create a lot that doesn't have any value or is pristine as buildable somehow.
Uh huh.
It seems like you would get a relatively quicker response from OPRHP because...
Well, they're much faster than they used to be now.
Right, but they're going to be, they're going to, they would receive the letter that you already had with the number on it, which means they should have that information.
And we are re-referring it, the new plans, over to them, so they'll be able to see that there's a house proposed.
Yeah, and if you just re-refer it and there's no CRIS submittal, they're going to call and say, you can't do that, you're doing CRIS submittal.
I think what caught my ear is when we do this, then once, if one site plan comes here...
It's already done.
It's a reaffirmation instead of someone going, oh, well, this wasn't, you know, I mean, it's all about, it's all about dotting i's and crossing t's.
It really is, just, and it's also about getting it done while you're looking at the big thing. And when the site plan comes in, then you won't have to do this.
So it paves the way for a faster process.
Well, I think, I think that when a site plan comes in, it'll go through it again because if, what I'm hearing tonight is the process, then it'll, it'll happen all over again. My concern is that I'm going to send this thing up again, and this is what's going to come back. Do you have plans for the building? Can you tell us what it's going to look like from the river?
We are re-referring...
And here we go.
We're referring this to SHIPO ourselves, so they would have copies of the plans. If you were included the first time on the application to CRIS, no, you, is, you're...
You have the files there, so I can't...
This is true.
...do it, so...
But the only way that Cynthia can go through and look at the CRIS information is if she's included as contact, both of us are included as a contact.
All right.
Do you know if that happened by chance?
Do I have what?
Do you know if you included Cynthia's email and mine as contacts for this project when you applied to CRIS? It was a while back.
Yeah, 2017, I'm not sure if they were...
I'm not, I'm not sure.
They were.
I didn't bring my entire file.
Yeah, or right around the time they did it.
And the reason why it may not go through is, it's been the board's, I don't want to say always policy, but for the most part, when we have residential applications presented that require a site plan, it's standard for us to waive them as long as we consider the aesthetic impact on one of the resources like the river. We don't ever really do Seeker on site plans for residential throughout this area, so that's why...
Plus, I wasn't aware that OPRHP was looking, would be looking for architecture.
I've never had that before.
That hasn't been typical.
I don't think they usually need to see architecture, especially if it's a single-family lot. I've never heard of that. I've heard of them asking for photographs, you know, plans showing the layout of a site and photographs of the existing site buildings and surroundings, but you probably already did that if you got a sign-off, so I would imagine if you, I guess, sent the letter that you had last time, plus your new plans, they should look at it again and go, hey, what's changed? And then ask you a few questions, and you might be done.
If that...
I'm guessing, but I haven't heard of them asking for architectural, unless it's like a major site and major development. I don't know why they would do that for this.
Not in the last 15 years I've been up here, they haven't, so...
So I don't think that...
All right, so the plan is, is that I'll resubmit.
And we will refer ourselves as well.
With your 2017 letter.
Right, because we never got to the point of typing the action and making referrals before. So, other comments before the memo? Anything else?
Most of the comments I'll have in writing will be pretty technical.
Ms. Weiser, comments?
No, I have no comments.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser?
I have two minor comments on the full EAF, and it may have to do with the fact that this is subdivision and not site plan, but on top of page four of 13, it says, does this include new residential use? And you've checked the box, no. And again, on page eight of 13, it referred to any outdoor lighting, and if there was a house, I would assume that box would be checked, yes. But again, I don't know if we're, how we're approaching this. Is there a house or isn't there a house?
Well, it actually lists one, one family, so that actually should be checked, yes. I'll just make a note of it, my comments.
Well...
Is that because of the subdivision?
Remember, there are other uses that can be allowed on this, on this lot that don't involve a single-family residential.
Right, but it says, it says...
And that's why it was checked the way it was checked, no, because who knows what's going to come in.
But it says, does the project include new residential uses?
Right.
So based on what we have.
Well, again...
But the only reason why there's anything on there is because you folks wanted it, not because anybody purchasing the lot wants it.
This is, this is a non-realty subdivision application.
That's why I asked, this is just subdivision.
Right, right.
But it lists one, one family.
It was really just to make sure it wasn't a typo and that you had checked that, so that's the only reason I bring it up.
It does say one family on there.
Yeah, it says one family, so checking it, yes, would be consistent, but...
But is that because of the subdivision, the fact that there's, isn't there something on the other lot once they subdivide it?
There's two dwelling units on the existing lot.
On the parent person.
So it's starting with one and it's ending with one?
And a theoretical single-family on the little lot.
Yes, I guess no is fine.
But what Ms. Andros is referring to is, the landings is created for water-enhanced and water-dependent uses.
Right, right.
Water-enhanced, one is considered residential, so you can look out, but there are a variety of other uses that we fit into those categories. And as he reminded us at the beginning of the application, this could be used to sell tackle and bait, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
There's an abundance of uses that would be commercial in nature that are allowed there as well.
Right.
So, and again, because this isn't going to be used to say Board of Health approved as a sale for a lot, I assume, and we have, this is my first time to deal with a non-realty subdivision. We haven't had them before.
Well, the Health Department approval will be for three bedrooms.
A conceptual.
Three bedrooms worth of design flow.
Right.
Now, somebody could come in and buy it and put three one-bedroom houses on it. Site plan approval, you betcha. Somebody comes in and puts one three-bedroom house on. Site plan approval, probably not. But there may be a commercial use that uses 330 gallons a day or less. Site plan approval, you bet. And that's why, in the beginning, I didn't want to put a house on there because now everybody's focused on this single-family dwelling, and it's not really...
It's not proposed right, right now.
You know?
And that was in the letter that I sent, that this is not going to require a site plan because he's not proposing that this be built. Because if he did, he'd have a year to start and two years to finish, and that's not part of the application, but it needs to be shown that there is a way to meet, as I said, some investment expectations.
But it would, when filed, create a lot that somebody could just come in and develop.
Yep, yep, great.
And we require a site plan.
For a number of things, not just a house.
Right, and we require a site plan.
Right.
But this gives us an assurance that there's something that if he sells it, that no one can say, you created a lot that I can't make any money off of, or something like that.
Right.
Because there's a lot of case law on that stuff.
Got you.
So, anyway, thank you. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
Oh, nothing additional.
Mr. Oliver?
No, no additional comments.
Mr. Napoli?
It's nice to see you again. It's been a long time coming.
It has. As a matter of fact, I think, I think we got it, we got involved across the street, maybe 20 years ago, close to.
Wow, wow. That is a long...
You were on a different board than us.
I know.
Right?
Back when, she was on the ZBA back when. Okay, I have some minor comments, but one of them is that I believe that the septic area should be labeled. I know when we met offline with Tad, you kind of showed us, but that should be shown. The lot label frontage, the lot frontage should be labeled on the zoning table.
The what should be?
The lot frontage. Just not listed, that's a requirement. I think the EAF that you submitted, it is the...
Is not the right form.
It's the long form, but it's also the older version, it's a newer one.
That's why I grabbed the EAF mapper and was going to email it.
Yeah, it's just, it's not going to change material or anything, but I believe before we refer it, we're supposed to have the newest version out. And then I was going to recommend that we set a public hearing from March 18th to give time for the other agencies to respond. That seems okay? Because this seems pretty straightforward now, so, who has, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution classifying the action referring to application to involve interested parties, River View subdivision, February 5th, 2020, resolution number 2017-11, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under Seeker, and, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to all involved interested parties once an updated EAF is submitted using the current form promulgated from the Department of Environmental Conversation.
Promulgated.
Conservation.
Promulgated.
No, I like conversation.
How fancy.
I saw that.
Yes, sorry, conservation.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Pete, if you could, some new plans, a new EAF, I mean, and three sets of plans, because it's going to go to Department of Behavioral and Community Health, Department of Public Works, this would involve the opening of the driveway and New York State Historic Preservation Office.
You can have one, you can have mine. Okay.
Just two sets. In addition, just some personal thanks for not using your property line for the setbacks, or using what seems more logical to calculate setbacks than what you could have used under our code.
Well, yes. It's a logic of it all.
He has, and if you notice, there's also, it's no storage area that's narrowly held.
We always ask.
Everything is shown, it's said, I just didn't see the septic, and I just think that should be shown up there. Otherwise, if you need anything, we'll see you either on the 18th, or if you need anything in the meantime, get in touch with us, and we'll get you back here to discuss.
Okay, so if we're going to schedule a public hearing for the 18th...
Make it a motion to set the public hearing for the 18th.
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
If that's the case, then when do I have to have this stuff back in? Because we've got to circulate for...
As soon as you can circulate, because they have 30 days to respond. I wanted to set the public hearing after the 30 days for their response.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is a signage for Phantom Fireworks. This is a very early...
Yes.
Request.
Early reoccurring.
But it reoccurs, and I, we appreciate the fact that he does this every year.
Yep.
So we have a recommendation for the waiver, and who has this resolution? Thank you.
I do. Phantom Fireworks, Eastern Region, Gardner Van Valkenburg, February 5th, 2020, resolution 2020-01, site plan waiver, 3969 Albany Post Road. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Vincent Zabo, Phantom Fireworks, Eastern Region, LLC, on January 15th, 2020, for approvals as required to establish a temporary sales venue for sparkling devices. And...
Give me champagne.
And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed temporary change as submitted on January 15th, 2020, and on drawings for, as, and on drawings as submitted, and that such requests should be incorporated into the records.
So moved.
Any second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a new sign for Jasper Cafe. This is a, I believe, sort of coffee shop that will be going into Bell Tower, Liberty Bell Plaza. This would be where TK Sushi, I think it was, KT Sushi?
Many years ago.
All right.
Yeah, it was. The sign conforms to code. It's going to match the signs that are there for existing design unity, and we welcome a new business into our community. So who has this resolution?
I do. Jason Cafe, resolution 2020-02, February 5th, 2020. Whereas, for times, now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board recommends approval of the sign permit for Jasper Cafe.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is an extension for the approval for Athenas East Solar Farm. There's also a request for the Creamy Street Solar Farm with similar reasons. Everybody had a chance to review the requests and agrees, okay? We also, I think one person probably has both these resolutions too?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, who goes first for Athenas East?
Me. Resolution granting second extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval for Athenas East Solar Farm. Resolution number 2018-12D, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a second 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval to and including June 1st, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, the next item being Creamy Street Solar Farm?
Resolution granting second extension of time to satisfy conditions of site plan approval, Cream Street Solar Farm, resolution number 2018-208D, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a second 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval to and including June 1st, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item is to set an amount for performance bond for Blair Road and recommend that the town accept the bond. This is, just so everyone's aware, this is for the west side, I'll call it, of Jeffrey Groves Estates. This is a side that's already been long-approved, but there was never actually a bond set because they weren't sure when they were proceeding with the application. Pete did a very thorough review of Brian's estimate and actually lowered it because Brian had put in some costs that are not anything that the town would undertake to work for. So, any questions from anybody?
No.
Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution setting bond amounts, Jeffrey Groves Estates subdivision, resolution 68-12H, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board of the Town of Hyde Park hereby sets the amount of the required performance guarantee for the construction of Blair Road at $810,000 and for restoration at $40,000.
Second?
Be it further resolved...
It's okay, you can't see it. I can.
That the applicant must obtain approval from the town attorney and the town board of the form and manner of execution of said performance guarantees.
And... Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You know, if you take a breath here, you just completely lose your opportunity.
So, has everyone had a chance to repropose local law A, which would permit two family dwellings?
Yep.
In every district?
Yep.
Let me start to my right. Ms. Napoli, any comments about that? Local law?
It's sort of like going into uncharted territories. I can make arguments of both sides, and I haven't, I don't know if I personally have enough knowledge to come down and say, yes, this is a good thing, this is a bad thing. Because I can see both sides of the issue. My, do we know of other towns that have this type of law?
Well, so, there's a movement across the nation, basically, to improve affordability of housing, so that districts which have traditionally been single-family only are now encouraged to have subsidiary housing, what would be like.
And that's the side I agree with.
Accessory apartment, something like that, because, and this also enables people who are aging to have an income off their property if they wanna try to stay in age in place, as it's called. So that's part of, I think, what's reflecting here. Cause I know when Anne and I took our affordable housing courses way back when, a lot of it was talked about creating apartments that were smaller so that they could be rented by young people in order to stay in the environment. In addition, if you remember, all of you read the Pattern for Progress Hudson Valley Out of Alignment Report. It points out that a majority of our housing is no longer, when I say affordable, affordable would be if you can take less than twenty-five percent of your take-home income, and most of the housing here is actually costing around thirty-eight to forty-five percent of your take-home income. So that's, if you read the intent, that's one of the underpinnings behind this.
But the issue, and I agree with all that, and I have no problem, but on the other side, thinking of just a side street, and if every home that's now presently a single-family decides to become a two-family, in terms of density and crap, that was my only major concern, like in terms of, of the septic systems, the, the water, the parking, the, just the volume of people. But I can't look down to the future and say, wow, you know, and that's why I was hoping tonight you could tell us, yes, this town and that town has.
If they don't, if they don't add bedrooms, you won't be increasing.
I'm sorry?
If there's a second family house, and there would be bedrooms, it's a family house.
But they'll still have to, if there's, but if they are adding bedrooms, then they still have to go through.
They have to go.
Department of Health.
So this one, they would still have to come through the planning board for a site plan or a special use permit.
What is S, is S for special permit or just site plan?
Special permit.
That's what I thought.
So, that would still be handled, and I believe, although that's one of my questions, is, is this still subject to the approved density? Because.
That was my question.
Many of the houses in what we call the village, cromwell acres up here, are already on the allowed density, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't really be able to have this, a second family house. They are allowed under our code to seek a special use permit and get a waiver from the, from the ZBA for density for an accessory apartment. Accessory apartments are different because there, the primary structure must be owner occupied, and the accessory apartment must be secondary in terms of size to the principal structure. This would basically say you can build even a bigger house than what you have on the lot, as long as density was met, I believe, for a second family house, cause there's no requirement for it to be, and they could both be rentals, there wouldn't be any requirement for the owner to be living in one of the houses.
But a lot of. Maybe that's one of our recommendations.
That's where we're going. So, does that answer more, more of what you were looking for?
Thank you.
Chris, do you have any comments?
I, I think, you know, when I first read it, I was a little nervous because I was thinking multifamily.
Right.
But two-family, I think is, is, I think it's a good idea, and I, I think that between density and Department of Health, it all, you know, when they come before us and make the application, that's when we're gonna see if it's suitable for that lot. And I think it's a good idea for the town.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
Is it allowed in any?
Every district?
No, 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 currently. Do we have any two-family dwellings that are allowed? It is allowed in.
Two-family are allowed in Greenbelt, right now. That's how, that's how.
Was this one you said?
That's how.
It is, it is allowed in Greenbelt?
Yes, because we have twenty-five two-family homes that we approved where the failed subdivision, my brain is going suddenly.
Oh, okay.
On Cream Street, which already started.
Oh, right.
Those were seventy-eight single-family, and they were able to come back, cause two-family is not allowed in the Greenbelt.
Oh, okay, because, well, I was just thinking in terms of, we've had a number of applications come before us where the only way the owner of the lot could really make it work would be to do two-family. And in many of the places where they wanted to do it, like waterfront, it was not allowed, and so they couldn't, they just couldn't make the cost work. And so I think this all plays into the whole affordability. Because it's site plan and special use, each site, each lot is evaluated for its own.
That's right.
Whether you can do it or not, so what Diane's describing is, well, that would be parking issues, probably, if you, everybody on one little street wanted to go two-family, you might have massive parking issues, which would, might negate, yes, it won't work in this particular spot. So I think, I think it's a good move. I, I kinda, I like it.
One thing to just consider also is that under special use permit, so Seeker looks at environmental impacts that are broader to the community. That doesn't mean that has to affect everyone in a town or city, but it looks at a broader area. The criteria for a special use permit are really pretty much the immediate surroundings, the neighborhood around, how it impacts the character of that area. Not just the character, but also the functionality, the safety, and how it works. So you do have that ability as planning board members, because of the special use permit, to say, wait, does this make sense here in this area? So that is a built-in protection that I just wanna emphasize that you referred to there. Stephanie?
I generally support it, but I have, I would want it to be owner occupied, especially if part of the premise is that people can't afford to stay in their own home. If they go into a nursing home, then the estate can decide what they wanna do, you know, with the house. But if the person's living there, I think, first of all, I think that would be one of my, you know, requirements. The other question I had, we had the same, and then the other question I had was, under special use permit, we talked about the immediate surroundings. To what extent do we have control over architectural elements about what it looks like to convert, you know, a single-family home into a two-family home? Does the driveway get wider, and does the architecture work? So, I'm not.
So.
I'm not sure what.
In section three of the proposed law A.
Yes.
Subject to special use permit and site plan approval by the planning board. So as long as required site plan and architecture, all elements of site plan are open to.
Okay. It's like taking special use permit, not site plan.
No, 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 cause it's, no, it's both, that's why, so we would be looking at impacts to the character of the neighborhood. Also, because of site plan, do you have elements that we think would be harmonious to the existing character of the neighborhood, et cetera?
Doesn't this make it stricter in eight districts, if I'm understanding this? In other words, it's going from permitted with site plan to special permission.
No, it's only permitted right now in Greenbelt, it's not permitted in all districts, so this is now going to a broader range of districts.
Without going with for varying.
Wait a minute, when is your latest use table?
Really? Did I, did I get an older use table, or two families everywhere?
I'm looking at a use table November two thousand nineteen, do I have the wrong one?
Everywhere within Town Center Historic District is not permitted in Town Center.
Oh, sorry, it allows it to Town Center, that's right, sorry.
I'm reading across two-family dwelling, it's special permit in Greenbelt and waterfront, but in neighborhood, in neighborhood core, Hamlet and Hamlet core, Crossroads core, Landing, East Park Business District, and Neighborhood Business District, it says P with two asterisks, which I believe is. So in other words.
But we're eliminating that.
No, we're, we're increasing the restrictions.
You're increasing restrictiveness.
It's gonna be site plan plus special use permit, that's right.
But I didn't see anything about, I didn't see anything about that it had to be rehab.
But we're omitting any current designation of P asterisk.
In other words, it would require both now, it would now require special use permit and site plan, so this would get rid of the designation.
But my point is, she's saying it's allowed, but it's, oh, I see you're saying it's more, yes, it's more restrictive. But it's an impactful change. I mean, you have a whole.
But you can already, you can already do it, shoot, that's what this is for. You can already do it, unless, I have the wrong.
You can already do it.
You can already do it with a site plan, and the law will change it so that you can do it.
With a special use permit.
You have to get a special permit and site plan.
And adding it into Town Center Historic District, you're correct.
It's not actually adding it to.
Should we request to change it to only affect that, so it's not getting a special use permit and site plan? Cause it's already permitted in those districts?
That's a good question.
I would think it'd be reassuring to have it be more, have a little bit more oversight with a special permit aspect added.
I agree. Because there are definitely some areas that it just wouldn't work, and without that extra special use permit.
And it still has to have the density.
Right.
And so I think, I would think the public, you know, neighbors would be more reassured that you have a little more, you have some other standards to jump through. There aren't any specific supplemental requirements for this use that I know of.
Once, if they do the Crossroads core redistricting, if that book ever gets through, then you will see that architectural, those elements will.
For residential too, that's right.
But until that goes through, we would have, we could still have another site plan.
Yep.
Okay. Then that was my two comments.
Okay. Brett?
Yeah, my question falls again, like she did, under owner occupied. If I look around the neighborhoods, I see the owner occupied ones are in much better condition and maintained than the non-owner occupied. So is there any rules or recommendations inside?
We can make a recommendation that, in this case, since they're only adding it to the Town Center Historic, Town Center Historic District, that should they consider ensuring that, just like with the accessory apartment, because the truth of it is, is you can always, you can get accessory apartment anywhere, but the only time you probably wanna do that instead of a two-family would be if you have a garage, you wanna do a garage apartment, or something that already exists to add on to it. Otherwise, it'd be easier to go through the two-family dwelling unit.
I'd actually want an affidavit of some kind, to tell you the truth, that certifying that somebody is going to be owner occupied, because the example I gave before is the ownership stays with an elderly parent, the elderly parent goes to nursing home, the estate decides to create a two-family home, and nobody's living there, but the owner's still listed on the ownership, so I just think, so it doesn't get abused as a, become a development activity.
I was gonna say, it's certainly possible to do this, because that's required for accessory apartments.
It is. I thought, I thought I'd seen it here before.
Same thing for a B and B, if it's a B and B, then the owner has to live, or the operator of the B and B has to live on premises.
And they sign something, an affidavit?
Yep.
I would like to have that recommended, cause I can take on a short walk too, and show you owner occupied versus non-occupied, and the difference between.
Enforcement's a different issue, but at least asking them to legally sign affidavit.
So we can make that suggestion, but again, they're free to ignore us, but I will add that to it.
Can I just, do you have a quick comment? You know, listening to you and to Brent, my first thought emotionally was, yeah, that's good, a little security here, we're not gonna have these random buildings with who knows who the hell's gonna be living there, but then like sitting with it for just a few minutes, do we, is that the correct road? I mean, do we want to be that much over people, telling them what they can and cannot do? I don't know if that's in, in the town's purview to do that. I'm not saying it's, they shouldn't, I'm not saying they shouldn't.
It's in their purview, they can do it, but the question is, is it a good idea?
Is it a wise thing?
Is it too restrictive, what you're saying?
Yes.
So that you can't own a house, that's a two, like, a house that's a two-family and decide just to rent it?
Right.
You can't create.
Okay.
The two fam, I mean, obviously if you own a two-family, own a two-family. I wasn't actually thinking about the social management of it as much as the architectural character of a neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a whole street of single-family homes, somebody wants to convert it, then all those people are wondering, well, we all live here, we all know everybody, we know everyone takes care of their property, we'd feel a lot better if the owner was on the premises, and.
And emotionally, I can understand that, I'm not disagreeing with that. But do we have the right then?
Maybe their lawyer will tell us.
Do we say?
Can I chime in?
Yes, I can understand that.
You know, we can make the recommendation that they consider this, and that it's up to the town board to decide whether they want to go.
Yeah, it might not be legal.
Whether it's legal.
Again, it could be legal, it can be legal. Now, are there ways around that? Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Do you really think that everybody lives in a house that has an accessory apartment? I'm gonna guess that probably some of them, when they got approved, they lived there, but afterwards they rented both. That's just enforcement, and it's hard to go back and enforce on that.
No, and I could also envision, if there wasn't abuse of it, the law would be coming back for an amendment. They'd have one neighborhood just gonna be up in arms, cause all of a sudden three houses change, and then the law's back in front of us.
This is looking forward, I mean, it's not looking.
Yes, and, and in some ways.
You're not going back and.
I was leaning toward, in favor of this, I'm just gonna say it now, since I'm speaking, but because, honestly, accessory apartments don't really supply the same kind of potential income than a second-family property would. Note that an accessory apartment will increase your school taxes and your property taxes, but a second house increases it even further. That's the tax implications, is that if you're gonna be renting this, you're also gonna be paying pretty much double what your, what your school taxes are now. So that's a way both of generating more revenue for the school district, and also, at the same time, our schools are, we don't, we have shrinking enrollment and shrinking birth rates.
That report was rather alarming.
It's very alarming, and that's why this is a way that you would be able to increase density in appropriate areas. Remember, for example, in the Greenbelt, you have to, it's one dwelling unit for two-point-five acres, so if you have a two-point-five acre lot, let's just say, you can't put the second dwelling unit on it. It's if you happen to have, we talked about the biggest state lots, so let's say you have a ten-acre lot. You wanna have a second family lot on there, say it's for your son and daughter-in-law, I don't know, or daughter and son-in-law, you would be able to do that because you have the appropriate acreage for the density, so all that's met. At the same time, we'd have more people living in here, but it wouldn't be so dense out in the Greenbelt areas, cause they still gotta meet, match that density. Neighborhood core and the landings, I believe, along with crossroads core, are the three that have the highest density, and that's, I think, eight units, dwelling units per acre. That's not gonna be really easy to meet still because of. Ten, that's it, because of septic requirements.
Town Center is eight, and that, that would be the most.
Yeah.
It's not permitted now, it would be permitted, and that is eight per acre.
So that's still gonna be, but because of lack of commercial, or lack of central wastewater, that's still gonna be difficult to meet in terms of, as Anne said, Department of Health is still gonna be on local.
Right, yeah, that's true.
To me, it's more or less a way of saying, we're going to encourage people to be able to have more housing in appropriate areas, basically. So, I, I can make the suggestion that they consider, and I will.
Yeah.
Making it owner occupied, do consideration be given to requiring that one.
As a condition.
Unit, yeah, be owner occupied. Anne, do you have anything else to add?
I was just gonna concur, and see what Liz had to say.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, I've written a lot of zoning, and dealt with a lot of issues with housing and rental and density and stuff like that. So, the concern about how does it look from the street could be dealt with with supplemental requirements that have nothing to do with ownership. And the reason that I say that is because there are plenty of baby boomers, young singles, young professionals, young couples.
Baby boomers are all very young, sorry.
Well, okay. Well, I did say baby boomers, and then I said young singles.
Baby boomers were great kids.
I wasn't meaning for them to be together, although they could be, anyway. But the point is, there are plenty of people looking for a decent rental, in some cases, preferably something that's more like a home than a multifamily building, and my experience has been that communities are more likely to have a great deal of concern about a multifamily structure than something that's a two-family, we don't call it a duplex anymore. But, but the architectural standards, in my opinion, are more important, and if it's, if it has to be based on ownership, then there's a potentially an excluded renter, because somebody has to own, but.
But remember the premise, the language, that they set up the premise in their current law, talking about people, older people not being able to maintain their homes financially, so that implies to me, they're still gonna stay there, and that was their premise.
I, I'm just thinking like, in terms of the, of the region having a, a lack of rental, and many communities finding multifamily distasteful as compared to something that looks a little bit more like single-family, which two-family could fit the bill with some decent architectural standards, you, you could be supplying the needed rentals.
I agree with the concept.
And, and the older person that owns a home could still do it, but it wouldn't eliminate somebody from wanting to build a two-family place, and.
Rent out both, both houses.
I mean, you've got some college and medical places nearby.
I think the senior is an example, but I think the overriding driver is affordability, which, I don't care what age you're at, or.
Sure.
It's, it's an issue.
Yes.
Did the town board consider down the road, someone coming in, buying Chris's house, single-family, knocking it down, and then building a two-story?
Yeah, two-family.
Going, two-family, going down to Anne's block, knocking down that house.
Well, it's a renew versus rehab.
Yes, because in certain areas, they do that.
Wouldn't make any difference.
It would not.
Because there's nothing that would say, if someone buys Anne's or Chris's houses right now and said, I'm gonna redo these and tore them down completely and changed it, that would happen.
As long as the density is met.
Let's just say about yours, say I'm gonna keep a single-family house, I'm gonna destroy your historic character building, the gorgeousness of that, and just put up something brand new and modern. It would require planning board review at all.
As long as it met the zoning requirements.
And that's just single-family, so that, that's part of it too there. Anne, does anything else you wanted to add?
No, no.
So I'll compose a letter this, over the weekend, and send it out to everybody at the next meeting. Weekend, do I have time for the next meeting?
They said twenty-fourth. They said the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
And our next meeting is the nineteenth. Right? So we have plenty of time.
Two weeks from today, yeah.
No, they have the twenty-ninth of January.
So we have plenty of time.
Yes.
Yay!
Just to say, it's interesting, cause they talk about affordability, but then they specifically say, and to. they specifically say, and to facilitate the ability of senior citizens to age in place. So they set that premise, so that opened it up.
But I think it's because they're thinking that, everyone keeps believing, I think, that the second family house is going to be smaller, subsidiary still, but it doesn't have to be. That's the thing. Which means it could be not adding to our affordable housing stock. But at the same time, you're giving certain homeowners more leeway with what you do, as I said. So, but I'll wrap this up and get it out to you.
Thank you.
Really quickly, some of you heard earlier today, I just wanted to mention that I had a phone call, a phone conversation today with a gentleman from the city who's just interested in looking at Golden Manor, which has been on the market for a while, the motel. If he decides to come into town instead of a meeting, I'll inform everybody, but he's looking at it with the idea of doing some sort of event space in the rear, whether permanent structure or tented or what. But that's an exciting idea, because that's been, that, that space has been on the market for many, many, many years.
What are they?
I think as long as we've been on the planning board, so fifteen years. I also, I heard from Bright Days Daycare, Sarah Sullivan, and she's currently looking now at going into the former offices of Dr. Howard Minzer, which is by Mizu Sushi. It's like three storefronts wide. It's not big enough for her to, to expand the business into the infant care.
Well, that saves a lot of aggravation.
But she is, she's looking at it. If they make the application, that'll be coming forward. So the good news is that even though she withdrew, she's still interested in staying in Hyde Park.
Yes.
I think this is a business that our residents need.
And that's, that's a move in, too, versus something that was going in.
I think this is a very easy move in, because they have already updated their septic.
Good.
And there's already school buses that enter in and go around Williams in the back to drop off students.
And there's a light and.
There's a light there, so it makes it controllable traffic a lot easier. I don't know if the buses would go in or not, but there's also already sidewalks there.
Oh, it's much better.
So at any rate, those, I anticipate that'll be coming back, and that's the only two new things I have.
Now, the pickup and drop-off, would it be around in back?
That's, she didn't, she didn't give me any details.
Oh, okay.
So that's exactly what, that's just what Diane asked, too. She's, would it be in the back? There's a delivery door back there, but that's it, so I don't know.
It's nice to know she still wants to work with us.
Yes. Absolutely.
That she's treated fairly.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, any questions?
In the Greenbelt.
Saker Law.
Good.